All the meetings are ordered.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Ms. Feig.
Here.
Ms. Lockpierre. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Salerno. Mr. Delgado.
Present.
Ms. Saratelli.
Here.
Mr. Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Whitley.
Alright, um, the announcements of compliance with the Sunshine Law. It's posted in the newspaper that we aren't compliant. Um, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome any visitors. There are none.
There was one.
She's not here.
Additional.
Um, the reading of the minutes for January 15th and February 19th. I think there's something changed in the 15th, so did everyone have a chance to read?
Number. Motion.
Just change in January meeting? Any questions concerning the minutes for January and February?
February, just one slight thing. Ms. Jackson. Taking that number. We're at point where we were talking about the historical room. And I made a suggestion that if people were coming from out of town, they might call the library. In case, you know, there wasn't someone available for them, they might call. And then here it says to go to a website. I wasn't talking about a computer, just to call the library.
Where's that? The second page?
I guess. One, two, the third page. Very top of the third page. Oh, just that slide.
So instead of going, it should, it should read that patrons should be able to call.
Oh, yeah. And also, Mrs. Key told us that she was gonna have a packet in the current, uh, she's gonna add to the current packet about, uh, what we, each committee's responsibility was. We need to ask that. Let me find, I had it on mine.
Okay. So I'll take a note of that. I see it here, it's in the, it's in the minutes.
It is, alright.
So, uh, it's on the second page on the bottom.
Alright.
Right before Mr. Redd's report. So obviously, it's not in the packet, but we can write.
Right, 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 right.
I said it, Ms. Feig asked.
Yeah. So, but I'll take a note of that for the next round. Okay. So can we make a motion to move?
Motion to accept the minutes with added adjustments.
Second.
For January. For Jan-, for January.
And.
After.
After.
February.
Yeah, we did.
But mostly adjustments between.
But we just, a patronship call.
Now that's.
I'm sorry.
No, January, there were adjustments at the last meeting, and then they were already big since here.
Okay.
So now we're just, we're just.
So we're doing February's.
So.
No, we need to approve, we need to make a motion to approve both January and February.
Let's do it separately.
Separately.
Motion to table, well, we have to take a vote, we've already motioned it. So let's table this, let's vote nay on this one, and then we'll be motioning, right?
Motion, no, make a motion to, we didn't name any months, so you can make a motion.
Motion to accept January as stated.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Ms. Feig.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Motion to accept February, the minutes of February with added changes.
Second.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Ms. Feig.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Okay, the treasurer's report for February and March of 2013.
Hello, everyone. Um, just to inform everyone, I can sign checks, and I have been signing checks since February. I just wanna go over a few things before I talk about the bills. Um, OCLC Inc., that is a library resource sharing database, and they do the interlibrary loan. So I know there was a few questions about that, and it's a big bill, so. Um, yeah, but it's interlibrary loans, and they handle databases for information for our computers. Baker &amp; Taylor.
It's a book company.
Book company, yes. Supplies multimedia books with the information. Matthew &amp; Bender does legal analysis and analytical information for our reference department. And Broadart, if I say, Broadart. Broadart, that's also another book company, and we ordered our Spanish collection recently from there. And just wanted to point those things out in order, if anyone had any questions, because those are just things I noticed that may not be obvious to everyone. I signed the checks for February, and I signed the checks for March. Are there any questions or? And I'll try my best as I can to answer them before we accept them.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report for February and March of 2013.
I, second.
We have to do each month's, each one separately.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so.
Let's do January.
Alright, so we'll do the month of February. Treasurer, we're making a, making a motion to approve the treasurer's report for February 2013.
Second.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Ms. Feig.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report for March.
Second.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Ms. Feig.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Motion of the bills.
The presentation approval of bills.
Motion to.
For February 14th and the March 14th.
March, eh, month. Motion to approve the bills for February.
They're moved away? No, this is just, that, the first one was the treasurer's report.
Right.
These are the approvals to pay.
The actual bills to pay.
I second the motion.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Ms. Feig.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
And motion to approve the bills for March.
Second.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Ms. Feig.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Alright, so the next one is the reports of standing committees. Um, it says, it indicates here that there were no meetings, but there were meetings. Do you have anything to report on the policy committee? The policy committee meet?
Yes, we have a report.
Okay.
We met on February 27th, uh, myself and the Amora Branch Library. We attended, in attending the, reviewing the policy, we have some suggestions and some questions. First, we accept the criteria for issuance of the library card as presented and deemed it to be universal. We strongly feel that some provision must be made to provide library service to shut-ins. It appeared in the documents we received that the whole area on shut-ins had been lined up, and there was nothing in there that we could find in the policy to replace how we're gonna deal with shut-ins. And getting books, you know, back and forth to shut-ins. So that's something that the group perhaps wants to consider. It talks about a mural card for interlibrary loans, and I just, what is a mural? Is that a separate library card, or who knows what a mural?
What is it?
You can use.
N-U-R-A-L.
You can use, you can go to, say, Union or Hillside with your Elizabeth card and use it.
Right.
It's an inter.
But they talk about a mural card.
Very specific.
Oh, well, I never had, I never had one of those. I haven't used it years, but just to go.
Cause we've used the card a lot, versus you just used the Elizabeth card.
Well, that's what I did, but they may have changed them.
And I just wonder what this mural card, it was in the policy, it talks about issuing a mural card.
Okay, so maybe you have to get a separate one now. Years ago, you didn't.
Let's table that question to someone.
I think we should, I, I think, I believe, we should probably, do you have that word for everyone to, to see?
One, one copy, she has a copy.
Okay, so what we can do is, I think.
Make further copy.
Yeah, maybe make a copy for everyone to read over. And then with regard to the questions, we should probably table that until the library director's here, so she can help us answer those, so that we can better, have a better understanding of what they, what they mean.
Cause there are other, there are other questions here that, that can change on her answers.
Oh, they also do. So is there anything that you wanna share?
I don't think, I think everything else we can bring up, pass next. Okay, which?
Um, under what circumstances may a library card be issued to non-paying, non-qualifying applicants? There was a paragraph in that brochure we were given that was very ambiguous about who can have a library card that does not qualify for one as a resident. Uh, so we need that cleared up. And then, we feel that ebook borrowing should follow the same rules of circulation as print material. The board voted at February 19th, 2013 meeting to change the non, to charge the non-resident applicants for an Elizabeth library card, the full fee of $50, and they may then use any part or all of our library facilities. The fee for replacement of lost library cards should now be $5. This will help to ensure greater responsibility for one's card.
So, with those, with those questions?
Not done yet.
Oh, okay.
Almost done. Uh, in the past, there was an amnesty day once a year where books could be returned without penalty. This was done to retrieve lost books, which otherwise would have to be repurchased or otherwise totally lost. The amnesty saves the greater cost of repurchasing the books. The interlibrary loan policy should stand as presented, respectfully submitted up by.
Okay, so, um, within those, I know that there were some questions that were still pending, but within those, those were then also recommendations that you're making to.
Congratulations.
Alright, so I, I would like to have a copy, and I think, right? If you don't have a copy, so that we can.
There may be some things that the board needs to vote on, such as the cost for a new library card, and I think we need to discuss, um, shut-in, uh, service to shut-ins. Because what it also says is. Oh, I'll tell you why. We strongly feel that some provisions should be made to provide library service to shut-ins. This is a section of a growing number of our tax-paying citizens who will be discriminated and shut out of the privilege of being a resident of this city. And that's why we think it's important.
And just to clarify, shut-ins are people that are immobilized, right? They can't.
Shut-ins are people that can't get to the library.
They can't get to the library.
It was in effect, uh, in 2009, because I know that when I was recovering from surgery and I couldn't get to the library, they came and they, you know, brought my books and they took the books back, so, for, for a couple of months.
No, many times.
So it was, it was very, very hard, although I had to wait three weeks, but, you know, but, but the service is very, very good, and it really is important for older people who really can't get out anymore, and, and, you know, the reading is important to them. So I think that if we have it, say, one day a week, that someone goes around, so, I think, you know, like the same guy who brings the, the books to, you know, the books that are brought to the various libraries, and have to go to the right, uh, uh, branches while they're doing, you know, the one who does that could also do, I assume, once a week to go to a shut-in. There aren't that many. Be careful.
So, thank you. Alright, so then I guess we can make arrangements for everyone to have a copy of this report?
Sure.
So that way we can review and then maybe add it to the next.
Whatever.
Alright, so, um, the other committee that met is a personnel committee, so that needs to be discussed in closed session. Um, there were no special committees. The library director is not here to provide her report orally, but she did provide it in writing.
Oh, excuse me, one minute. I need to interrupt you. You said there were no other meetings. At the latest meeting, Mr. Whitley said that he was gonna call the budget committee, because in March, there was gonna be an audit.
No budget committee has been called. If one needs to be called, I'll call one.
Are you?
I'm the chairperson of the budget committee. But no one reached out to me to say that we needed to have one, so. Okay, I'll make a note of that for next one. So, budget committee.
Um, reading of communications.
So I'll call a budget committee.
Unfinished business. If you go to the page where it says old business, there are a few things, um, the security system. I believe it was brought up at the last meeting, and it was at a stalemate. Um, a legitimate vote was taken, but it was a stalemate, so.
Right, it was two, two.
So we should probably vote on that again.
But before we vote on it again, and maybe it'll go down, but I just wanna say two things. One that I just.
Uh, I can't hear you loud and clear. I'm sorry, I said, I just wanna say a couple of things, and then we can vote on it. I just was not comfortable with a no-bid contract.
And, but there was.
No, 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 no. Because this was to go to this one security company, which was thoroughly vetted.
Right, exactly, that's what I wanted to hear.
I know, I know, and it was, and it was recommended by the New Jersey State Library Association. So at the, at the meeting, uh, last week, I went out over, after the meeting, and I spoke with Mrs. Shapiro, Mrs. Timmeltine, Mrs. Roche, the heads of the, the library, the New Jersey State Library and the, uh, the trustee association. And I posed the question, I just asked, you know, what do we do in a case like this? And they said, well, if it's been thoroughly, cause I wanna know what the, what the laws are, what the rules are. If it's been thoroughly vetted, and I said, oh, you know. I can't keep. And I said, that they had actually, you know, they had recommended the company, which I understand. I said, but I just was concerned that we just couldn't get some other bids. And they said, no, in, in such a case, and in cases of an emergency, if a pipe breaks or something, you can get a company in without a bid. And then, one of the directors said to me, how much is it for? And I said, $76,000, and all three said, immediately get more bids. Because apparently, over $17,500, you're supposed to get bids, even if they vetted you, and they say that it's, you know, okay. So that's just what I wanted to put in.
And I, I actually had a very exciting weekend. I read the state regulations. And I was very desperate for something to do. The, um, as I read them, if you go out, if you don't use the state contract and you do bid, like first, there's no, there's no prohibition about, if you use the state contract, you, you fulfill the bidding requirement, according to the laws I read, because the state has already run the bidding on it. But if you get bids in, you cannot award unless the, the price you get is at least 10% under the price that the state contract provides. The second thing is, if you put a bid together, who do we have that can write a technical specification describing the system, and more importantly, describing how you're gonna evaluate the bids? Someone comes in with six cameras, someone comes in with eight cameras, someone comes in with 10 cameras. Who do we have that's technically knowledgeable in security area to say, well, this, this'll work in this one room? Because if you turn a guy's bid down, he's gonna take your right to call it to find out, why are you, why would you throw my bid out?
And to answer that, if we do go out for bid, like you're saying, we're gonna, we're going to have to have someone create those specifications, and none of us can do that. So we would have to pay additional money to have someone come up with the specifications that we need beyond what Tyco, which is the, the state-approved one, um, has provided. We don't have that information, like what Mr. Weaver said.
We didn't have the information to start with. All we had was this one company coming in and saying, this is what we.
But, but that, that all of that work was done already with the state, is what, is what we have.
We have worked.
We have peace of mind that if the state is telling us and recommending this, then all of that is done.
No, I'm not, believe me, I'm not arguing with them. My, my, you know, I just said I wasn't comfortable with, with, and we could've done this if we were gonna put it out for bid. This has been delayed since December. There was a quorum in December, and it was never, the vote would never change.
First of all, would take even longer, I would think, because we would have to vote on how much money we're gonna spend on someone doing the specifications, someone who then would need the time to work on the specifications for us. And then, again, same thing that Mr. Weaver just said, and thank you for that, because that's something I didn't even know.
I didn't, I didn't think of that either. I didn't think of that either.
I had no idea.
I just figured that if we got someone qualified, and they would be as quali-, you know, get someone as qualified as the next one.
So are we sure that they're thoroughly vetted?
Oh, they are thoroughly.
They are thoroughly, that's 100%. They're the ones who's taking, so they're, okay.
They're the, the state, the state already did all of that for anyone who needs a security system.
Okay.
I just wanted to clear up, you know, what was, what was in my head.
You know, that, that it was a lot, a lot of money.
And also, the point was never, I made the point, but it was never answered. How was it going to be monitored? Who was gonna look at this? Is it going to be a preventative measure with, with security? Or is it going to be after the fact, after there's been a, a problem?
They did a.
That they're gonna recognize who's gonna go after.
They, they, they provided us with a really comprehensive presentation. Um, actually, there are extra packets here.
I was sick during your presentation.
It was thorough.
But in, but in reading it, I just.
No, it's a lot, it's a lot. They, it's, it's preventative, and I'm, I'm not gonna go into it, it's gonna take way too long for me to explain every detail, but it was very thorough, and the, the system is comprehensive in that people would have swipe cards. And if you try to get in a place where you're not supposed to, it automatically alerts. You know what I mean? It's all computer-driven. So that was the one thing that I remember that was preventative.
Just, just briefly, um, the system's design, it can be used as a preventative.
That's what I, that's what I'm.
It can be, yeah, it can be used as that.
Because Mrs. Key, from what I remember, had explained that she, she, you could even, she could, you know, be sitting anywhere, and she could get it on her, you know, on her.
Cell phone.
Cell phone. And, uh, well, that's all well and good, you know, you could be on your way somewhere else, and it's coming in on the cell phone, or sitting at your kitchen table. I'm concerned that if somebody, God forbid, is attacked in a, in a hallway, or, or someone, is someone there to go catch him, not go be able to recognize and identify them after the fact?
I understand.
That's what concerned me about.
Like if one of our security personnel is going to be.
Someone watching.
At least, you know, looking at it periodically. Like at the high school, there's someone looking at the cameras constantly, cause if something happens.
But that's something that we would have to discuss once we have it a place. At this point, we can't even talk about that, because we have nothing, you know?
Okay, no, but that's, that's my, that's my big concern with it, my only real concern.
From your, see, cause I was on the board when we get the presentation. From your, as you remember the presentation, there is a, a monitoring station available.
Yes.
It, it can be monitored.
So it's up to us to decide whether we need personnel to monitor.
I, if I had internet access, I could mon-, or not me personally, but someone could monitor it from right here. Or wherever there's computer access.
Someone can monitor, so it can be monitored.
Because Mrs. Key said she could have the monitor in her office. Well, she, she's working all day, she can't watch the monitor, obviously, you know? So that, that would make us.
My real concern, that someone. In this whole thing, I mean, the cameras are all well and good, and pictures are all well and good, but if someone is, is beating up somebody, let's say, down the hall, and somebody, either in their car, in their kitchen, or even in another part of the library, sees it going on, by the time they A, contact a guard, which are not in great profusion, or by the time somebody gets there, it's over.
At that point, you would have to dial 911, whoever's watching the camera. And that would be the quickest way.
No, 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 no. If someone is beating me up, by the time 911 is done, I'm in the hospital.
But let's, let's, then, then the only thing you can do is propose solutions to that.
No, the question of, of.
Because really.
Wait, 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 wait. The question of cameras and security are really one package in my mind. And the whole idea is, how do we keep our people and the public safe?
Right, well, it would have to be a combination of things. The police department, the police department came for any incident that was.
Too late.
Recently, the police department came and recommended that we install cameras. Because basically, how, what can they do now? They can't help the library.
Exactly. Therefore, we need internal guards and security available and readily available.
Right, but that's a different conversation. So at this point, I think that we should, um, take a vote on approving the security system as it was presented. If you need a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, it's here.
But I, I understand Mrs. Feig's point, but that has to do with, well, how do we direct the, the security, or how do we work with the security guards?
And we should definitely talk about that at some point. It just had nothing to do with this system, in my mind, right now.
No, I, I.
This gets very technical, it just doesn't explain what I, what I ask.
It's how we use it, basically. From what I remember from the presentation, there could be monitors, at 24/7, if we need them to be monitored. The question is, how are we going to use them, which then becomes.
We have to set up, we have to set up a monitor.
Procedures, policies and procedures to handle that.
Regardless, we have to do something with this. Policies and procedures have to be created along with this, or it doesn't make any sense to just, you know?
I agree with you, I agree.
To, to make it as efficient as possible.
So we do need policies for this.
Well, I make a motion that until we know what full scale of the implementation of this system will be, that we table it, until we get the information we need.
But what information do you need? It's all here.
Who will check the monitors? How often the monitors will be checked, and where will the monitors be?
That's, 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 that's gonna be up to us, whoever we get in for a security system. Then we have to vote on whether we're gonna have.
A guard assigned to the monitor.
Assigned to it, okay, guards.
That can be a package?
No, that, that has nothing to do. They set up the monitor, or monitors.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, it's up to us to.
As a board, to create the policies.
And a legitimate vote was taken, and it was, it was a stalemate, so we're just going to.
Tiebreaker.
Yeah, exactly. So.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
A legitimate vote was taken at the last meeting, but it was a stalemate. So we're going to re, or propose that, okay? Um, so, someone wanna make a motion to approve, to vote on?
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, bid for Tyco Integrated Security.
A second.
Ms. Alvaro.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes, with caution.
Ms. Feig, same caution. Ms. Jackson, yes. Ms. Saratelli.
Yes, with the same caution.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
So, are we voting on the circulation policy, I'll see?
I, I don't, I don't think it's, I think there are still questions in it, right?
So you wanna address all the questions first?
We should probably wait.
I'll address all the questions.
Um, budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014?
I am, I was not presenting a budget or anything, I didn't, there was no meeting, so I don't feel comfortable proposing a vote on something I don't know anything about.
So we'll table it.
When does the fiscal year, when do we?
That's a good question. It ends in June, so it's July. It ends in June, that's right, that's a good question. That'd be making my fees.
I didn't hear.
He asked, when does the fiscal year end?
Oh.
It ends in June, right? Cause then, we, we have to vote in July for the leftovers.
We, we don't vote July, cause we're not.
The emergency vote for the. The emergency vote for the roof and that was the leftover fund, so it, it ends in June.
Alright, new business, New Jersey Library Association Annual Conference. Is that the, is that the?
Yes.
Mrs. Fight, I think knows about that, right?
Uh, every year there is a New Jersey Association Annual Conference. I think this year it's going to be in Atlantic City. I don't know exactly where, but we'll find out. Usually what this library does is it sends one librarian, uh, each librarian gets a chance for one date at the conference. I think it's a two or three day conference and the library funds that. There is an admission charge. And it's up to all New Jersey libraries and their representatives. Not necessarily public libraries, but school libraries and people associated in some way with it.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Fight.
Well, is that in the library director's report that the conference is June 3rd for the bid?
Oh.
Okay, I think that's trustee association.
And it is in May, I think.
No, the trustees, I think it's in May is another one, right?
The association would be, would be the junior.
Actually, this is really boring because it's talking about ebooks and technology, new, new, um, innovations, I guess, in technology with regards to libraries.
They have, they have many workshops.
Um, did we have to vote on or did Mrs. Keif indicate that any employees that are going or needed to go?
No, the employees have to request.
They have to request it through her.
In writing.
Got it.
That's how it's taken care of usually.
We don't have that information yet. Maybe next.
Meeting?
Meeting, we can.
But any trustee can go, I mean, we recommend that they go.
June 3rd, what week is it? Is anyone?
Uh, the trustees are usually funded, totally funded for the whole time.
That makes sense.
If they care instead.
Does anyone want to go or is anyone still going? June 3rd, are you looking at the calendar?
Yes, I think if I remember correctly.
It's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
It's Monday, Tuesday.
If you want, yeah, I'm not going to.
Alright. Alright, so that is just an announcement, I'm assuming, about the conferences. Uh, comments from the public? There's no one here. No comments?
Motion to go into closed session?
A second.